Could you come up? When I was a first-year teacher at Hill House High School, the, the, when I was a first-year teacher at Hill House High School, can you hear me? The fans have got us, huh? When I was a first-year teacher at Hill House High School, a, uh, an assistant principal took me under his wing. And not only did he take me under his wing, but all of the good educators at Hill House took me under their wing. And he never left me. He's actually responsible for every career move I made. And he was able to talk me down at times when I was so angry that I wanted to just, wha- what do they say in P-Funk, "Turn this mother out"? And he would always say, "Eddie, that's not the way to go." His name was Eugene Vitale. Uh, and his widow, Marie Vitale, is here with us tonight. So a bunch of, uh, retired administrators got together and said, "We need to honor our mentor." And we put together a bit of money. And, uh, we're giving the Eugene Vitale Leadership Award for the first time to a young man who is a perfect example of youth activism. He's ethical, he's courageous, he's smart. And he has also, he's, he's handsome and he has a great voice. So hopefully, he'll keep that. I believe he will. And I'm so proud to give this award to John Carlos Musser that will probably help him buy a few books when he goes to Williams. And so on behalf of all of the people that Eugene Vitale mentored, on behalf of his family, on behalf of my big brother, Michael Nass, Dr. Michael Nass, who served on the board, I present you with the You Make a Difference Eugene Vitale Leadership Award, June 23rd, 2025. You want, would you like to say anything, Ms. Vitale? Okay. Okay, thank you so much. And that's the mark of a whole village. We take care of our children. And we sit down and talk about what's the best way to take care of them. So thank you.
Thank you. We will now enter our public participation part of our Board of Education agenda. Thank you for being present. Welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the Board to conduct its business. Regular meetings are a time for the Board to conduct its business. As a Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The Board may hear public participation for up to 60 minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of people. We ask speakers not to make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Dr. White, it's also my understanding that there are, um, two members online. If we can begin with those two, then we will continue with those in person. I recognize sometimes we don't get to the online members.
Our first speaker is Crystal Emery.
Dr. White?
Yeah. Ms. Emery, we can't hear you. Please speak up if you are speaking.
Before she starts speaking, I'd like to know, I'd like to let the public know who she is and why she's here. She's actually a Hill House, well, Catherine Brennan Sheridan, a Hill House graduate. Uh, she's an internationally renowned writer and activist. And, uh, she was at Hill House and later went on to University of Connecticut. She really is a phenomenal woman. And some of you may know her, you might have grown up with her. But she's here tonight to talk about her education in New Haven, as well as a book that she's written, which I would hope everybody would buy. And the book is called, um, Missing, uh, well, I'll let her tell, tell you about that. So without any further ado, uh, Ms. Crystal Emery, Crystal Renee Emery, would you please begin discussing your journey? And, uh, I would ask that you would keep it to three or four minutes. Thank you.
Meeting, I see. Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can. Go ahead. I can't figure out how to get my picture up.
Can you hear online? We cannot hear in the room.
Dr. Benitez, can you say something online so we can see if we have in tech?
I can hear her online.
We can't hear you.
That's the problem.
Okay, so we got, we got a glitch that we need to fix.
What does it ID? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
We have a sound issue, Ms. Emery.
Yeah, can you unmute me? They, I, we can hear you online, but apparently they cannot hear us in the room, so they're working on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Dr. Benitez, can you speak again?
Yes, can you hear me? No? I'm speaking, I'm speaking. No?
Can you read it again?
Hmm.
Dr. Benitez, can you hear us?
Can you hear?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I can hear you, yes. I can hear you.
Dr. Benito, are you able to?
Uh, Dr. White, can you hear me?
Mr. Juarez, can you speak? Both of them are out.
Yes, I'm happy to, to say something. I'm, I'm speaking now. Um, I can hear everyone that's online. Um, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear the people online. This is Crystal.
Testing one, two, three. Hello, this is Daniel Juarez. Uh, can you hear me in the room? Hello? Good afternoon, everyone. Daniel Juarez here, testing. Yeah, I think we're still waiting for the people in the room to adjust the sound. Um, but, um, I'm sure they'll interrupt me as soon as they can hear.
Now we can hear you, thank you.
Wonderful.
Oh, that kicked me out. Hi, can you actually hear me?
Ms. Crystal, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
If you can, please speak.
I can hear you. And I can hear Ms. Emery also.
I, I put it on the chat that we can hear each other and them. I'm not sure if they're looking at the chat.
Can you still hear me?
Yes, Ms. Emery, we can still hear you.
Yes.
And now we can hear you here in the room.
Okay, great.
Can you? Thank you for being.
Okay. All right, should I talk now?
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Hello to everyone there. So I did most of my education through New Haven Public Schools. I went to Catherine Brennan. And at that time, Catherine Brennan was an amazing school to go to. My teacher was Miss Dixon. And, uh, during that time, I fractured my hip. And so not only did I go to the elementary school, but then some of my teachers, particularly in sixth grade, had to come to my home for homeschooling. I then went to Sheridan. I went to Hill House. Um, I had a very wonderful experience, uh, within the school system in New Haven. I have wonderful, wonderful teachers. And I think for me, the greatest impact was that my teachers loved reading, whether it was Winnie Dixon or whether it was Mr. Hime or whether it was, oh, God, Mr. Gibson. Whoever my teachers were, uh, they loved reading. And so I was introduced to reading at an early age and began to understand the power of reading to take you on a journey outside of your neighborhood. And so that early start, uh, I remember I went to the library and I, I took out, I snuck out, uh, The Valley of the Downs. And Mrs. Dixon caught me with it. And she was like, "This is not what a fifth grader is supposed to be reading." Uh, but I was interested in having a fifth grader. But the point is that as a writer, I try to write tell stories that transcend race, social, economic, that engage people where they are. Because the challenge is, uh, being a young person, that particularly a young person in America are generally the same. Do you want to feel safe? Do you want to feel valued? And you want to be able to learn. Uh, got Hill House. I was able to join the Yale program. I retrained Hill House, got that program. I was really introduced to very high levels of literature. And all of that is what created the person that I have today. I know that teachers, kind of, it's very difficult now. And I think that we must teach respect. But in teaching respect, we have to teach young people to respect themselves. And they have to understand that their education, whatever grade they're in, shapes and mold who they will be as adults. And that is the gift that New Haven Public Schools gave today. Um, I am an educator, I'm a field maker, I'm a writer. And, uh, I am very proud to say that I graduated from Hill House. I don't know if anybody wants to ask me a question. Thank you so much for listening to my story. Donna Scott.
And I'm going to try to get her to do a, um, a book, a book event, uh, at some time when the weather's better. And hopefully invite people in, uh, that grew up in that neighborhood. And you'll see how she represents the people, the places, and the things in that community during her time. Thank you, Dr. Yarborough, for granting us this. Take care, Chris.
Take care, Donna Scott.
Thank you very much.
Our first speaker is Charlene Bishop. And on deck behind is Kathy Trenn and Christine Kozewas. Excuse me, if I mispronounced that. Let's go to the school.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Charlene Bishop. I have three kids that went to Brennan Rogers. My 15-year-old daughter, Nija, she graduated from Brennan Rogers back, um, three years ago. Her eighth-grade class was disassembled and, um, they had to go to different schools to finish out the eighth-grade year, which really impacted them because she was in Brennan Rogers from when she was little. So that was a big thing for them. And now I have two more left at Brennan Rogers. My 12-year-old son, Aiden, which is going to the eighth grade now, I'm so proud of him. And my 11-year-old daughter, Kyra, they have been at Brennan Rogers since kindergarten. So I will stand behind them. I am the mommy that does speak good, bad, and indifference. And I will say that you guys should give them a try. And where you think that they're failing, step up and help us. And if us parents can do something, let us know what we can do that can help the kids out too. I don't want to see my kid, my son, have to go to a different school. My son is artistic and he has, I'm not going to cry, my son has a lot. And he's been getting a lot of help since we found out what was wrong. And I think for him to be moved right now, when he's so stable and knowing that this is his last year and he's off to the eighth grade and from eighth grade to high school. And a lot of these teachers behind us, a lot of these wonderful teachers my babies started with from when they were little. So even when they get out of hand or anything, I get a phone call from Ms. Neil Palmer, from Ms. Porter, from any of them. Ms. Bishop, Aiden's doing this, you need to have a talk with him and everything. And I would say we do stand behind each other as a community for all of our children in need and everything. I've been through a whole lot of changes, domestic violence and everything. And I can say that I can pick up my phone and I can call Ms. Neil Palmer and I can sit on the phone with her for hours, talking to her or asking her questions. These kids know Brennan Rogers as home. This is their home. This is where they started. This is what they know. And to continue to take them and putting them in these other schools, it's a lot for them. I, I had a talk with my kids last night to tell them, you know, little people, they might be closing the school down. And they're asking me, "Well, where are we supposed to go? What is supposed to happen? Where are our friends going?" And then my son's big question is, "Do me and Kyra stay together?" They've never been apart from each other. They've always been in school together. So it's like, what do you tell them? And all I can say is, "I don't know, but mama will go to work at 3:30 in the morning today. I will come to this meeting." Because it's for all of them and it's for all of the mommies and daddies who didn't get to get out here and make it night. I'm speaking for all of us. If you feel, again, if you feel like we're needing more help, more teachers, bring it on to us. Don't just exclude us and think that we don't have what the system needs. And you guys feel like we should just dead the school. Don't dead the school, help the school. Tell us what we need, tell us how we can help. Brent us these grants that these kids need and keep pushing their education because this is what they do know. And to transfer them out to other schools, my daughter had a lot of work to do when she went from Brennan Rogers to Edgewood to catch herself up to where they're at. And I'm not saying they weren't getting taught at Brennan Rogers or anything like that because I give it to all these teachers behind me. They were. It's just that Edgewood's kids were like more up there. So my daughter stood up till two, three o'clock in the morning. And I would say my daughter did the eighth grade from November to June and graduated with honors and everything. I got so many props for her and so many, if she ever need anything, they can come to her and they will fit for her. And that's going to be Brennan Rogers' first doctor because that's where my daughter's going off to be in a doctor. So that is my story for me and my three kids.
Thank you.
Kathy Trenn. And behind is Christina Kowalska and, uh, Ms. Vadeisa.
Um, good evening, everyone. Good evening, um, New Haven Public Schools Board. Good evening to this great community behind me. Um, my name is Kathy Trenn and I am the Interim Operations Lead at Sola Youth, a local nonprofit that partners with schools and communities to help youth grow as leaders through outdoor exploration, hands-on learning, and youth-led action. Um, I'm here today to speak not just on behalf of our organization, but on behalf of the young people that we have proudly served, many of whom rely on Brennan Rogers, not just for their education, but for stability, safety, and connection. For years, we've hosted our after-school programs at Brennan Rogers, serving up to 40 youth each academic year with a team of up to 10 teen interns, most of whom are local high schoolers who come to this site at Brennan Rogers to build their professional skills and grow strong mentoring relationships with younger students. And our impact with Brennan Rogers and the neighborhoods this school serves has not only happened during the school year. In summer 2023, we ran a free full summer camp experience at Clarence Rogers, the earlier counterpart of this school before it was closed and merged. We had served 100 youth from this community, many of which from Brennan Rogers, who bravely explored the natural environment unique to Bren- Brennan Rogers, um, the beautiful surroundings of West Rock, um, built friendships that will last a lifetime and simply experienced the joys of being a kid in a neighborhood that is too often overlooked in New Haven. There are many stories I have from our after-school program, from our summer camp. But the very first story that made me realize the impact of this school site and the beauty it can offer was on the last day of that summer camp when a youth asked me if every summer can be like this, if every season can be like this. I told him I wasn't sure, but I'd make sure I tried my best that that could happen. Um, now, as I look ahead, I'm thinking about him. He is a Sola Youth regular. He's a Brennan Rogers student. He's there for every summer camp, every after-school program. And I'm thinking about all the youth like him who don't just attend Brennan Rogers, they depend on it. Closing this school would create a huge gap in services, support, and opportunity for dozens of families. It would send a message that this part of New Haven is not worth investing in. But I believe it is. I've seen the potential here. I've seen what's possible when we meet youth exactly where they are, right here in this building and in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Kazakovich, teacher at Brennan Rogers. And I am here tonight to ask the Board to vote against the closure of Brennan Rogers. For 15 years, Brennan Rogers has been my home away from home. I've made lasting relationships with many students and their families and countless memories. Dr. Negron, you stated that you understand the impact closing would have on our students. Do you know what it's like to go to the home of your kindergarten student the morning after his mom tragically passed away and feel the tightness of his little arms around your neck? I do. Do you know what it's like to provide Christmas for that student because it would be the first one without his mom and receive a thank you phone call on Christmas morning? I do. Do you know what it's like to have that same student make so much progress in his therapy sessions that he now feels comfortable talking about his mom after two years, simply because you're sitting there with him after he refused his sessions? You see, Brennan Rogers is more than a school. It's a community. Many of our students have experienced trauma similar to that of what I just mentioned. The staff worked tirelessly in order to ensure our students have a safe, supportive, and loving school environment. The thought of potentially closing Brennan Rogers is heartbreaking for all involved. For most of our students, school is the only sense of stability they have. The staff at Brennan is like no other. We are family and we are crew.
We are crew.
We are more than just teachers, and that doesn't happen overnight. May 5th, 2023, we were sent an email inviting us to a voluntary emergency staff meeting on May 9th after school. Meeting started in the library where we were greeted with Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. It was then we were told of the changes for the 23-24 year, where we would drop down to one class per grade and move into one building. We lost many members of our family then. But as we often do, we pulled together and made the rest of the year memorable for our babies. November 2024, our middle school students were told they would be moved to different schools, again losing family members. Fast forward, May 2025, when we were again called into a meeting in the library and greeted with, you guessed it, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. We were told we were losing our pre-K, once again losing family members, or as it is commonly referred to as, "right sizing." With the closing of pre-K, we lost around 34 families due to parents needing their children in one school. We asked at that time if our school was closing and we were told other cuts would take place before any schools closed. June 17th, last day of school, when teachers should be celebrating the amazing year we just had and eager to start our summer vacation, we were again called into an emergency meeting. It was then we were told about the potential closing of our school. While we may not be featured in Facebook posts or highlighted in news articles for the work that we're doing like the other schools, we work tirelessly behind the scenes for our students, their families, and our community. And that's where it matters most. Hasn't the Brennan community taken enough hits? Instead of closing, I urge you to start investing in our school and give our children the future they so desperately deserve.
Good evening. My name's Despina Vasiades and I am the itinerant school counselor at Brennan Rogers. Quote, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be," Rita Pearson. Today, I would like to speak about my students at Brennan Rogers. Last week, we received the heartbreaking news of a possible closure of our school. Since then, my heart and mind have been racing, not for myself, but for my kids. And yes, I call them my kids because that's what they are. I've held them as they cried. I've sat with them through their grief, fear, anxiety. They run to me for comfort, support, and joy, just like any child would. They run to me for comfort, support and joy, just like any child would do to a trusted adult. That is Brennan Rogers. When I became itinerant, my students were upset. They felt the loss of my daily presence. They told me it wasn't fair that other schools got, quote, "more." Why? Because at Brennan Rogers, we have built something more than a school, a family. Just this Tuesday, four seventh graders were in my office excitedly planning their future, talking about high schools, dreaming big. Because that's what we do at Brennan Rogers. We dream big. We are crew. A team that works together to lift each other up and reach our full potential. Brennan is more than a building. It's a safe haven. Our schools receive two to three meals a day. They are surrounded by teachers who love them and go above and beyond, often spending their own money to make sure that no child goes without. They have access to after-school programs that keep them safe and engaged. Our family resource room provides food, diapers, clothes and essential supports for families. We offer programs like Girl Scouts, chorus and more, opportunities that help our children thrive. In the last three years, our test scores have gone up. Attendance has improved. Smiles and hugs greet us every morning. And yet, we are now told we may close. Let me be clear, closing a school like Brennan Rogers is not just closing a building. It's breaking a community. We serve students from three of the lowest income neighborhoods in New Haven. And still, we rise. We are resilient. We are strong. We are mighty. I hope that you will remember that students are not a number or a dollar sign to balance a budget deficit. Please reconsider this and help us to grow. And remember the words of Rita Pearson, "Every child deserves a champion." Thank you.
Charlene Neil Palmer, sixth grade teacher at Brennan Rogers. Before I read this, Dr. Joyner, you walked into something. You said Dr. Vitelli was your mentor? That's what we are to our kids. We are there for them through everything. When she said that the parent died, yes, I had two students who siblings were tragically shot and killed. And where did they come to? They came to us. And we were there. We were their village. Because you walked into that one too. You said that Mr. Vitelli was that we are those children's village. That's what we are to them. And it's a crying shame. It's a crying shame that the black and brown communities are constantly being targeted with closures, with cuts. You just did it at Wexler and Lincoln Bassett and now you're doing it again? I don't see cuts going on in the Latino community of Fairhaven. Those schools are thriving. Those schools have high enrollment number. I believe Eckler, years ago, you said that your children attended FAM. So we want the same thing for our community. We want that. We are not in charge of enrollment. Central offices, we get what they send us. And if they don't send us no students, how can we be targeted because we have low enrollment? Start sending them kids to us. And stop sending them somewhere else. The East Rock community is thriving. Fairhaven is thriving. But why is it that the African-American community is being tore down? Long after Superintendent Negron is gone, onto her next position, we are here to deal with this mess.
Corner border. Let's not, I don't have a problem you calling my name because I know you well. But let's not, let's not ascribe any motives to when Dr. Negron will leave, but that's not fair.
Okay, no, so I'm not attacking her. The only thing that I'm saying is that positions, people get better positions. We're stuck in this community, right? We're here in this community. We're doing the groundwork. It's not a shot at Dr. Negron, not at all. I'm just saying, when she gets a better position, we're still here. So the only thing I'm asking is to consider our black and brown children in our communities, our really undeserved communities that are missing so much. And Dr. Joyner, you know that I'm a fighter. And you know, I'm only going to speak out if there's injustice and it's injustice. And I'm done.
Latrice Peterson, then Brian Purvis and Giovanna Cordez.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Latrice Peterson. I'm a special education teacher at Brennan Rogers. I did have something written that I would have spoke on, but it wouldn't have been organic for me. So instead, I choose to speak from the heart. On June seventeenth, at one thirty, we were called into the library with what we were told was just a meeting with the superintendent. Imagine the feelings and the heaviness that was felt when you stepped into that library and you saw union representation there as well as representation from HR. As my colleague said, what should have been a day where we were rejoicing and completing a successful school year, we were met with a huge ton of bricks of uncertainty. To where the next day we're getting up, my coworkers and I were heavy. And to this very moment, it's still very heavy. I can't imagine what closing the doors of Brennan Rogers would do to that community. When we had an absence of Ms. Gay, our family resource person, that community struggled. Parents struggled, right? Thank God we have someone that was replaced in her place. And the outpouring of support and parents that flooded into that building every day, Monday through Friday, to speak upon the students and their needs. Professionally, my job is for me to be an expert at observations. To see those students in that building, the one hundred and thirty-two students that we have enrolled currently as of today, to see them displaced and put into another building in larger classroom sizes, I can only fathom what that would be like for the students that I would have serviced on my caseload. Larger classroom sizes are not the answer to reaching district baseline scores. It's just not. To say the least, going back into the community, because for me, this is what this is all about. A lot of my students are in the custody of their grandparents who don't drive, who barely can make it down to student-teacher conferences. And what does my coworkers and I do? We get them on the phone. During PPT meetings, when they can't come, what do we do? We get them on the phone or we go pick them up. There's been times where majority, I had twelve eighth graders on my caseload that got into magnet schools. Those parents that did not have transportation, I spoke with my teachers, I spoke with my principal, I spoke with everyone on my team. I gave up my lunch breaks. I gave up my prep time to get them downtown, to get those students there. Why? Because that is what community does. Catherine Brennan has a legacy. It's not just the name of a building. It's the name of a person in which the city decided to dedicate many, many years ago that building to her. It'll be a crying shame to see that torn and stripped away from that community, very less than resources. And I know my time is running out, but if I may, one last second. Back in the spring, there was a press conference held at Wilbur Cross High School, where the question was brought up again about another school that could potentially be on the chopping block to close. And it was said, and quoted in the New Haven Independent as well as the New Haven Register, that that school would not be touched until the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. That is not the case in this situation here right now. Now, when we have a district where parents are already feeling like it's a discord, we're creating even more. You guys have a wonderful day.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Negron, Board of Education members. My name is Dr. Brian Purvis, proud graduate of the New Haven Public Schools, a healthcare professional and father of two New Haven Public School students. One who graduated this year and one who was entering the third grade at Brennan Rogers. This was one of the worst days of my son's graduation as he graduated and I received a letter from the superintendent saying that the school would close. Let's be clear, Brennan Rogers is more than just a building. It's a lifeline. It's crew. It's a community. It's where my daughter feels safe, secure and seen and supported. It's where teachers who work miracles every day with limited resources, deep dedication and full weight of a community on their shoulders. This proposed closure does not just, it's just more than about numbers on the budget. It displaces a hundred and thirty-two students. It disrupts families. It strips educators of the classrooms, the relationships and the sense of mission. These are the very teachers behind me who stood by our children during the pandemic, that are still standing by our children, that show up every day. They show up early. They stay late. They carry the emotional labor of teaching in an under-resourced environment. As a nurse practitioner, I understand the real consequences of this disruption. It increases anxiety, academic decline, long-term emotional harm. As a parent, I'm terrified what this means for my daughter and the other students. And as a clinician, I'm compelled to share with you the American Academy of Pediatric Statement that has warned us about this exactly action. In their policy guidance, the American Academy of Pediatric clearly states, "School closures, especially in underprivileged areas, cause serious harms to children and adolescent health, deepen educational disparities and compromise emotional well-being." This emphasized that schools like Brennan Rogers are pillars of child health, not just places of instruction. Closing a Title I schools sends a wrong message to Hartford, to Washington and to the families who trust us to protect their children. The sixteen point five million dollar gap is real. But robbing our children and educators of the stability to patch it is short-term thinking with long-term consequences. We must explore smaller, more reasonable, smarter alternatives, budget reviews, different alternatives, community partnerships, without erasing one of the places that children and teachers could count on. So I ask you as a father, as a healthcare professional, as a New Haven graduate, do not close Brennan Rogers, do not silence hope, do not push our teachers aside, do not abandon our students. Keep this school open for our children, for our educators, for the soul of this city of New Haven.
Hi, everybody. My name is Giovanna Cordez and I have seven kids that went there. But before that, I was a student at Brennan Rogers. I'll be forty next year. So to keep the school open is very important to me because I had not only my eighth grader right here that graduated the other day. I have a twenty-two-year-old daughter that's about to be twenty. She graduated from there. I have a fifteen-year-old that graduated from there. And I also have a three-year-old that's supposed to come for pre-K. So to take the school from my kids or anybody else's kid is going to be hard. Right, son? So I'm a little nervous right now because I really did, I wrote stuff down, but I didn't bring it. And the teachers are amazing. Ms. Winfrey, been there since I've been there. Before I went there, she was there. Ms. Neil Palmer, she helped me with a lot of stuff. Ms. Elizabeth, I don't like saying her last name, but Ms. Lizzy, Ms. Padilla, Ms. Averna, Ms. Kay. The whole school, actually. Like, they helped me out a lot. With the kids, their attitudes, everything. So to take that from them is going to be real hard for not only the kids, the parents as well. And like she said, with the parents, the guardians and the people getting the kids back and forth to school. My mother has my daughter. How my mother gonna get my daughter to the school or from the school if there's no school? The nurses, everybody, like they stay after, they make sure the kids are fine. They call me, I get phone calls every day from the school because they're hands-on with the kids, especially mine's. Mine's, it could be tough. So for them to stay and to deal with my kid, they should be there. Because my kid is, I didn't bring him. I should have brought him so y'all could see what they deal with on a daily. But he's six years old. He's hard. He's like, you know, they hard. And for them to not give up on these kids and they keep pushing them out, going graduate eighth grade, pre-K, kindergarten, like, they should be there. I don't want my kids nowhere else. We tried John Martinez. It didn't work. For three of my kids, we ended up back. I was thinking about taking them away, but why take them away when this is our village? I could go to any one of these teachers for anything. My baby right there, I just had a baby. He's a month old. That was my school for him to go to. But if you close it, what we gonna have? We don't have nothing.
Our next speaker is Dennis Filippi, followed by Alicia Winfrey, followed by Iva Johnson.
Okay, that's better. Well, I feel like I'm back in school in the nineteen seventies, no air conditioning. But isn't this meeting itself emblematic of the New Haven Public School system, right? Nothing works. The air conditioning doesn't work. The clock doesn't work. The tech doesn't work. Forty-six schools and we can't find one with the air conditioning that works. Here's what I'm having a hard time understanding. We're ten weeks from school starting again and we don't have a comprehensive plan on how to deal with enrollment and the schools, where the kids are going to go and how we're going to pay for it all. You've been here, Dr. Negron, for two years now. You had to know you're coming into a school system now had financial struggles. And Mayor Ellicker, you've been here for five and a half years. Five and a half years. And during those five and a half years, you've had five hundred million dollars more than Mayor Harp. That's money from the federal government, the state of Connecticut, Yale University and the taxpayers. Five hundred million dollars over five and a half years. And the schools are worse today than when you took office. That's a failure. We all know that the primary focus of local government is education. It's true in Guilford, Greenwich, every local government. That's where a majority of the budget goes. That's what you should be graded on, Mayor Ellicker, the schools. That's why people move to community. That's why they stay there. That's why they go to a new, go to a neighborhood is because of the school system, not because of an event downtown on the Green or anything like that. And so you failed us. You failed the students. You failed the families.
Corner border. Corner border. I'm not going to sit here and listen.
I'm going to speak my mind, Doc.
You can speak your mind, but talk about the closure of Catherine Brennan.
No, I don't.
And don't blame people for dealing. You're not supposed to talk to me. Corner border, Madam, or Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Joyner.
He, this, this, his commentary has devolved into an attack against the mayor, against the superintendent, without considering the financial context that he is fully aware of. And this is not the purpose of this meeting. I'm not going to sit here in the hot, hot building.
The hot building is your fault, not mine.
See, that's a personal attack.
Well, you don't.
So.
The problem that people are having is the facts in the truth. We don't want to hear.
Port of all the taking.
I can switch gears. I'm happy to switch gears.
No, I.
I will happily switch gears.
Mr. Wilcox?
I would like to make the point that by providing, we don't have to have public comment, but because we do have public comment period, we've created a free speech area where we ask people to follow some standards and we have limited ability legally to stop people from speaking their minds. So I humbly request that we allow the speaker to continue because that is what we've been advised by attorneys as well, is that when we have public comment, this is what we have. We create this zone and we need to respect it. Thank you.
I will kindly switch gears to finances. So I have a few questions. Why wasn't, why won't the board release the budget details by school? And I've got, what you have online and what you've provided is a summary. We want the details. What this, what this board has done is less than the previous boards and less than what was done decades ago under DiStefano. So when you don't release the details, you lead people to believe that you're hiding something. So why don't we have the line item details, okay? And, and, and why can't we get FRAC to help with the public school system deficit? FRAC has been dismantled under this. FRAC has been dismantled under this administration. It doesn't even meet. They used to provide advice to the public school system and the city on finance matters. Mayor Elicker destroyed FRAC. Where is the $40 million budget deficit that the mayor says he made? The $40 million budget surplus that, that Mayor Elicker claims we have? You wanted the state to use their budget surplus. Why don't you use that budget surplus for the schools? Aren't the kids good enough? So you're not being transparent, Mayor Elicker. Instead, you're acting like a king. And in my world, in this country, there's no kings. You need to take responsibility for the public school system that we have today because it's all happened and taken place under your administration. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Alicia Winfrey, followed by Iva Johnson, followed by Shirley Banks.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Winfrey. I am a peer educator at Brennan Rogers. First, I'm gonna start by saying, that community is my community. That's where I grew up. Brennan Rogers has always been a home to many families out there. Not only to myself, my siblings, but to my children and my children's children. So there's three generations at that school. Not only that, 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 we've been in that community so long that my mom has a street named after her in Rockview, Ruth Jackson Boulevard. That's how long we've been a member in that community out there. Closing Brennan Rogers is hurting because our children are gonna be lost without some of us. Most of our children depend on us. Not only, not, we're not their moms, but we became like second mothers to them. I've called children in the morning, 7:30 in the morning, "Hey, listen, feet on the ground, school starts at 9:15, let's go." And a lot of the moms came to school and they were sitting there like, "Oh, your mama bear?" Yes. We become their mama bears at that school. So closing Brennan Rogers is gonna hurt a lot of children. Not only the community, but families that depend on Brennan Rogers for after-school care, for homework help. And for just a shoulder to lean on, every one of these people right here behind me. February 17th, I lost my mom. Every one of these people still behind me called me to check on me, knowing that I have a heart condition and they had to make sure that I was okay. I've been at Brennan Rogers 35 years. I am one of the oldest and original members at Brennan Rogers. I take nothing for granted when it comes to Brennan Rogers. I give that school my all and all, and I give the teachers my all and all when they need my help, and the kids. So closing Brennan Rogers is gonna be harmful to the students and harmful to the community. But in closing, it's gonna say, what's happening in this school district is not equity and justice in education.
Iva Johnson, followed by Shirley Banks, followed by Jenny Graves.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. And you know what? I don't have a script. All I have is me and my community. I'm a ward chair of Ward 30, West Hills, West, West Rock. And since I've been there, I've seen schools leave. I've never seen a store, a grocery store, and I'm about to see another school leave. So when I think about community, I think about the neighborhood. I think about the dogs that you run away from. I think about the lawnmowers that, that go on early in the morning when you're not really thinking about that. And then I think about my community, where if everything's closing and there's no stores, grocery stores, or anything else in that neighborhood, what is a child gonna think about where they live? Now, some of the teachers have said that other teachers have left because they went on to better jobs, better schools. So what do the students think that are still there? Do they think they're good enough? I mean, if I was a child, I wouldn't think I was good enough. So in my neighborhood, are we good enough? Or aren't we? It seems like we're not good enough to even invest in our community, to invest in our students, and to invest in our neighborhoods to uplift them. So, yeah, I'm speaking from the heart. And yeah, I'm a little bit angry about that. And yeah, you know what? Everybody in this room is more than likely a voter, right? So we vote for you guys to do what you're supposed to do. We vote for you to do the things that are necessary for us to live decent lives, right? Now, I don't see it. Thank you for your time.
Shirley Banks, followed by Jenny Graves, followed by Marie Vitale.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't come here expecting to speak, but I moved to Rockview in 1988. And my kids were kind of disconnected with the schools that they were in. The minute we went to Brennan Rogers, we knew it was a family. The three communities out there are a family. I was on the tenants' council from 1989 until the time I left there, at two, okay, in 2001. We fought to have Clarence Rogers opened. We fought to get the, the road to go through, all the way through over to Hamden. Now, this is coming from my heart. Please do not close this school. These kids have a sense of community, of safeness, and warmth. That's what my kids felt. We never had a problem down there. We went to someone to ask for help, we got it. I don't know what else to say, but you can't close Catherine Brennan. That is the best school in this town, as far as I'm concerned, in this city. Because we have all these people here who care about those kids. And I care about those kids. I don't live there anymore, but I'm coming back because I want them to keep Catherine Brennan open. Thank you.
Following Ms. Graves, we have Marie Vitale, Delena Gamble, and Maria Page.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Graves. I'm a preschool special education teacher. I'm vice president of New Haven Federation of Teachers. I'm here today to speak on the proposed closure of Brennan Rogers and against the policies, both local and national, that continue to fund and dismantle public education, especially in our vulnerable black communities. Brennan Rogers is our school in the heart of West Rock, is now on the chopping block because of low enrollment. But let's not pretend that this is a sudden issue because this is what decades of disinvestment looks like. Of the 1,400 families living in West Rock, fewer than 50 send their children to Brennan Rogers. Why? Not because they don't love their neighborhood, not because they don't believe in public education, but because they've been given the false promise of school choice. Same with Wexler Grant, same with Lincoln Bassett. This is what happens when you strip resources, eliminate staff, and let programs die. And when enrollment drops, as it inevitably does under these conditions, we're told the school is no longer viable. But Brennan Rogers did not fail. We failed Brennan Rogers. We have to name what is driving this failure. School choice, under the guise of equity, has become a weapon of inequality. It turns communities against each other, labeling some schools as good and others as bad, based on access, proximity, and privilege. It pits schools against one another for resources that should be guaranteed to all. This is the same ideology we see pushed in Trump's big stupid bill, a voucher scheme that redirects public dollars into private hands. Trump's school voucher agenda promises parents a lifeline, but what it really does is open the floodgates to privatization, pushing public schools like ours further into crisis. So I ask us all here today, what are we going to do together to stop this? How will we end the farce of school choice that masks systematic neglect? How will we reinvest in our community schools, not just in name, but in staffing, funding, and care? How will we stop the expansion of vouchers that will bleed our schools dry? Brennan Rogers didn't need to be closed, it needs to be funded. West Rock doesn't need to be evacuated, it needs to be supported. The only way forward would be deep sustained reinvestment in our public community schools because our children should not have to choose between well-funded schools and their own neighborhood. Every school in New Haven should be a beacon of opportunity. Every school should have libraries, counselors, art and music, and teachers who aren't stretched thin across grades or cut out of budgets altogether. We need to reclaim what is ours, and that begins today by all of us saying, "We will not let another public school die on our watch." Thank you.
Please note there are 10 minutes left in public comment, so please, as best council, stay to the three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Delena, proud parent of Cody and Kennedy, who attend Catherine Brennan Rogers School here in New Haven, Connecticut. The school has served our neighborhood since the 1950s. In 2010, it united with Clarence Rogers to become today's vibrant Brennan Rogers Magnet School of Communication and Media, offering a small, community-focused K-8 environment. This isn't just a building, it's where our children are known, supported, and heard. It's where teachers nurture Cody and Kennedy, where families feel connected, and where Catherine Brennan's legacy of accessible student-centered education is kept alive. Closing this school will not only break that legacy, it would uproot our kids, increase transportation burdens, and overwhelm nearby schools. Instead, let's honor Catherine Brennan Rogers' vision by keeping these doors open for our community and for all the children who call this school home. Thank you.
Marie Vitale? Maria Page?
Yep.
Good evening. Mayor Eckler, that is notice to the city. I apologize in advance to the whole board that I went down to City Hall and I asked for a couple of copies for you guys. And not only did they take the stapler out of each of the documents, but they mixed them all up. So I try to do my best to unmix them and give you a copy, but I will give you another official copy tomorrow, either via email or whatever. But it is down at City Council for you to retrieve at your leisure. My oldest son is about 28 years old. He went to Clarence Roger. My daughter's 25, she went to Clarence Roger and Catherine Brennan. And now I have my granddaughter and my, my daughter, which have been there for seven years. It is very overwhelming to hear that the love and the harm that you guys are causing intentionally. I don't wanna get kicked off by stating facts, because facts are not defamation. But I can tell you for sure, for the last three years, this has been a setup for Catherine Brennan and Brennan Rogers. You was receiving magnet funds, but we're our magnet funds federally. You have taken dollars that belong to our school, whether it's Title I, Title 19, ADA, a whole bunch of different federal funding, the National Meal Program, I mean, food program, whether it's the summer, the dinner, the after-school programs. You're taking all these things away. And I promise you, you go to sleep tonight and you'll have a good rest. In the meantime, you have parents that are having anxiety because now, where are our children really gonna go? How are they gonna go across town and get bused to another school? Or try to make it for dismissal if they're working to get them from an after-school program that is no longer there? Because you closed the building. They have nowhere to vote. You took West Hills, made that a shooting ground for the police, but bullets all over. And my memories of my elementary school is gone. And all I have is the Board of Education to thank for that in the city of New Haven. So powered by the city of New Haven, you have children that you are denying a free, appropriate public education. You're discriminating against a protected federal entity. Is that my time? Okay, can I just speed it up? Okay, sorry. Well, nonetheless, these children are protected. You are officially on notice, and for the record, you're on notice. Have a blessed one.
Dr. President, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much for sharing public comment. Next on the agenda are action items. The first is to approve the minutes of June 9th, 2025, and the special board of ed minutes, June 13th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote Dr. Joyner.
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Mosser? Ms. Cologne is not here. Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next, the personnel report by Dr. Negron.
Good evening. Before I ask for your approval of the personnel report, I do want to highlight six individuals who are retiring at the end of the month. That is Trudy Anderson, foreign language teacher, retiring, retired on the 18th after serving 33 years. Charlene Coppoli, library media specialist, retiring on June 30th. She has dedicated 29 years to the district. Steven Furtick, math teacher, also retiring on June 30th after serving 25 years. Harold Houghton, special education teacher, also retiring on June 30th after serving for 27 years. Dale Joyner, physical education teacher, retiring on the 30th after serving 36 years. And last but not least, Carlene Manson, grade six teacher, who has served for 34 years. And with that, I ask for approval of the personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's personnel report.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Thank you, Ms. Downer. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Very grateful for everyone's service, as you mentioned. We will vote, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next is the Finance and Operations Committee Report, or Action Items. Mr. Wilcox?
All right, so I've had a request to move two items separately. So first item that we'll be moving is the, just to set this up, we did have a special meeting on June 13th. There were questions raised about proper noticing of that meeting. While we got our information to the city clerk's office in enough time, it did not make it available to the public. They did not make it available to the public, so the recommendation is to revote on this item that we passed at the special meeting. So I move that we approve item listed as four point zero one, the agreement with Integrity Concepts LLC, also known as ServiceMaster Elite.
Thank you. I second that motion. Any discussion? Ms. Downer.
So I didn't attend the meeting because I actually volunteer for the board. I am gainfully employed, thank God. But I had a question about the contract with ServiceMaster. Was there any memorandum that was for the school that said that we were going to mitigate and try to get out of most of this privatization? I mean, this contract is huge, and I didn't see any memorandum. So was that provided at the meeting?
Thank you. Is there response from Mr. Wilcox or the district?
There was a-
Sorry, I'm looking, sorry, Mr. Wilcox. Respectfully, I'm looking for the district to answer that. Is there, is it still on the table to mitigate Local Two Eighty-Seven back into our school system so we can get out of some of this privatization? Because we're actually getting the same workers that we had from SJ Services.
Ms. Downer.
Yes.
We've had a discussion and things were written up, so I'm trying to get an answer for you. Is there a response from the district or Mr. Wilcox?
It pertains to item four point one, the discussion until bringing in a contractor to support with the part-time custodial contract. That went through the process of the RFP and following all of the city requirements. So we did engage in just trying to select a part-time custodial contractor. The conversations that we have had related to privateization continues to be based on the previous recommendation from Mr. Carter, who was supporting us as a COO, to ensure that we're building the language that is needed for the, to strengthen our oversight, to make sure that we have stronger monitoring. And that would come in the form of the soon-to-be director of facilities, which will become the bridge between the district and the contractors. So that was the extent of the conversation. But again, that does not pertain to the part-time custodial contract, because that was more under ability and the bidding that went on and the scoring that took place to see which of these contractors met the scope of service that was put forth as part of the RFP that was put out.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox, do you have anything to add? No, thank you.
I just have one more question.
Yes, Ms. Downer.
I just, was there a meeting with Local Two Eighty-Seven?
Ms. Wilcox, I've had numerous meetings like I do with various unions, inclusive of Local Two Eighty-Seven. They have been a great partner in joining me, and at one point, Mr. Carter was in that meeting, as well as Dr. White, continuing to share ideas. So I am very thankful for their partnership. And again, I'm looking to continue that partnership with them, as I do with all the other local boards.
Is this, does the school system attended, will the school system do something different so we can have a different outcome with the same people?
The difference, again, comes in the form of the monitoring that we are laying out so that we can have clear rubrics. For example, with this particular contract, there are rubrics in how we want to go about checking to make sure that they meet our expectations. And again, a lot of the goals that we're laying out, banking on that director of facilities, that again, is going to help us to be able to do that direct oversight of any contractor, not just a part-time custodial contract.
Okay, one more. This, the same individuals refuse to do some of our services at FLAC and for these large sporting events. Is there something written so we won't be encountering that problem of another five hundred thousand dollars?
I think following the rules of ensuring that when jobs are posted, that they become available to all individuals. One of the conversations that was held with this particular contractor was the fact that we wanted to have the input and the feedback from our building administrators and our athletic director, because after all, they are the ones that see the work that happens inside of our facilities. So there was input related to things that they would like to see as it relates to when it comes time to bring in the employees onboard.
Okay, one other question I had. The background checks that's actually provided by our New Haven staff is extremely rigorous. Are these people receiving the same background checks coming into our school system, being around our staff and our students? Or are we relying on ServiceMaster to do the background checks?
I am going to ask Dr. White to speak to that question.
Yes, in terms of background checks, there's expectation that they meet the same standards as the school district. That was part of the conversations as we interviewed the candidates to have this contract.
Okay, the last question I have too, will they behold to the same standards? Whenever there is a teacher or a staff member that's removed, they get marked. With the state of Connecticut, they cannot be around children. Are these people held to the same standard? Or they go, just go work at another school system?
Absolutely. Whenever somebody's put on a registry, everyone is held to that standard. It doesn't matter which, what role it is that they have inside the district. That is an obligation that all public schools have to adhere to.
Okay. All right, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Joyner?
First of all, I have more confidence that people will have to do the right thing in terms of our buildings now for a number of reasons. One, it's because you're on the board, you're an engineer, and you know far more about buildings and HVAC systems and what have you than anybody we could possibly hire. And you're also a graduate of the school district, so you have that personal connection. I think the biggest thing that we have going now is that, just like we document academic growth, we're going to be using instruments to document how well our buildings are clean. And in the case of buildings, it's either clean or it's not. And so if it's not, and I also think that what you and Dr. Negron did last snow season, by going around checking on people, is the kind of stuff that will be done at a high level, at an institutional level going forward. So if they say they've removed the snow and we see that they haven't, then there'll be a penalty for that. So I think, I think that the intelligence on this board, the commitment on this board, we are moving in a path to try to bring back some of these jobs, but it does take time. And if you were around when we first started this, we had a little bit more oversight, and then after Dr. Mayo left, we had far less. And it got worse and worse until Dr. Tracy and Dr. Negron took over the district. And I'm not blaming anybody for that, but that was the way things went. So I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that we'll do better.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. We will now vote. Mr. Wilcox.
Yes.
Dr. Joyner.
Yes.
Dr. Benitez.
Yes.
Ms. Downer.
I'm a no.
Mr. Juarez, not here.
Mr. Juarez is-
Yes, thank you. Mayor Ellicker.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Mr. Wilcox.
The next item is listed as item six point one seven, renewal of option three of three with the agreement with ABM.
Second. Any discussion? Ms. Downer.
Yes, I'm just really surprised that we are even talking about this. Last, last year, I thought that ABM was done. And now here we are again, and then I go back to like the September article where ABM, I'm not calling off a name, it was a New Haven Independent article, that they were actually blaming us for our policies and procedures and the struggles that they have. I mean, like most privatization, it does lead to improved academic outcomes and potentially it's good for innovation and improved outcomes. So I would say honestly that ABM has actually showed us a lack of no transparency, no accountability. The quality of service is probably a zero, hidden costs, and also burden on the taxpayers. So by signing this contract, I, I just, I just, I just can't even believe we're actually having this conversation. If anybody, and that's your choice. If you want to speak highly of ABM, go ahead. We already know what our conditions of our schools look like. But something has to give with this. I mean, really, two million dollars is a lot of money to be given someone to do exactly the same thing, expecting different outcomes. I am in total disagreement to even, in fact, it needs to be tabled, to even consider them, knowing that they had caught, they had vendors, they had all kinds of vendors that didn't do the work. Not to mention that the people that they had overseeing our HVAC, our HVAC system had an expired license and not even qualified to oversight the person. A D-two cannot oversight a S-one. None of you can tell me that. None of you. It behooves you to check out who we have servicing our stuff. None of you could tell me the quality of services that ABM gave us was superb. But I'm speaking for myself. I'm speaking for what I saw. We don't deserve this. This should have went out for bid. They should have never been back on the table. And I don't care if none of you actually table it, but I'm voting no today, and I don't care. It's a no for me, a no, no, no. In fact, it's a heck no. And I wanted to say another word, but I didn't. I'm sorry. There are no. And I'm done.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Wilcox. Mayor Ellicker.
Can, Ms. Downer said a number of things that I think ideally the chair of the finance committee could respond to so that the members of the public and the rest of the group can understand the complexity of this.
Mr. Wilcox.
Thank you. So I'm going to be voting in support of this this evening to exercise the third year of this contract. I'm comfortable with the district's plan for putting this out for bid and have, giving them enough time so that they're able to consider how many of the positions currently outsourced to ABM can be in-sourced back into the district. And that's going to take more time than the week, week and a half or so before the end of this fiscal year. And so I, for some of these things, there's differences of opinion. We've heard testimony from Mr. Michael Carter, who used to work with us, and others related to some of those issues. But I will be moving, I will be voting for this so that the district has time to properly put this out to bid, to have conversations and to decide which of these positions work better in-house to bring these jobs back in, but that's going to take some time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Joyner?
I think there are two things that people have to understand. One, when you have a deal to extend a contract, you typically do that because it will save you money that could be redeployed in other areas. If you remember the bus contract, had we extended the contract with First Student, we would have saved about almost two million. It was, it was a lot of money, and that money could have been reallocated to something else. We're in a position now where we, we can't raw peter to pay Paul, but what we can do is look at the most cost-effective means of providing services for, for our students and families and also hold people accountable. It's, it's almost like supervising a less-than-adequate employee. That person may be capable of doing great work, but they haven't had adequate support and supervision. In the case of, of ABM, I'm not a big fan of ABM. I think it's a matter of record that I said that back, back when. But the fact that there's oversight, the fact that there are guardrails, and the fact that there are documentations that will have to assert that they are doing what they say they do, and that there are more eyes on them, I think that we can get better work out of them. And if we don't, there'll be a penalty for it. But shifting from privatization to, back to our unions takes, takes a bit of time. And we're actually saving money by extending the contract rather than hiring another person. And over time, I believe that we are building a path back to something that's more fair and effective. But we even had problems when we didn't have privatization. I was a principal. And I had all, all of my custodians were union people, and I had to really be on their case. Not every one of them, but a few of them who would take longer breaks and, and that sort of thing, or not clean up or sit in, in their, in their room and read the paper when they should have been. So, so oversight, I think, at this point, will solve this problem for us. And it's not just of them, it's for anybody that we pay our monies to.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote.
Ms. Downer has her hand up.
Is your hand still up, Ms. Downer? Has it stayed up?
Oh, no, I put it back up.
Okay, thank you.
Because I want the public to know.
Ms. Downer.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I just want everybody to know that this is not their third year. ABM has been doing business with us since twenty-twenty-two school year. And this is future dollars. This, this should have been thought about last year. This is the, the same approach to wait till the last minute and we could bridge a contract. I thought last year we had this conversation. Obviously, it's what I forgot. I didn't. The fact is that this is future dollars. This is future dollars because not only affect everyone in this room that is a city of New Haven taxpayer. And I want you to get a good look who's voting for this. Get a good look. Get a good look about our schools. You're in a house, you're in that building.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Like I said, I'll, okay.
You're attacking all of us.
Listen, listen, I will slow it down. I won't even talk. I'm talking to the public.
There's a point of order on the table and-
Dr. Benitez.
Rules requires us to acknowledge the point of order.
Want to hear your point of order?
So I will, I will say this. I won't attack.
I feel threatened by them.
You cannot, I'm Dr. B.
I do not understand why you have to be threatened.
Ms. Downer, one moment, please.
You're not silenced, but you're threatening us.
One moment, please. Ms. Downer, thank you. Dr. Benitez, I receive and hear your point of order. Ms. Downer, please finish your comment. Ms. Downer, please finish what you want to say.
But what I want to say is this, to say that, to say that this is their third year, that's incorrect. I read the, the, the purchase order and it said twenty-twenty-two year. So this is indeed their fourth year. This is indeed their fourth year. Last year, we spoke about looking at not just bridging it, but actually take a look before it actually comes to this time to bridge a contract. I see that's, that's off the table today. That's all I'm saying. But you know, I get it. Say what you want, but I wanted to say that this is their fourth year. This is not their third year, this is their fourth year. And it was something that we talked about, that we wasn't going to do this anymore. We are doing this tonight. So I still have my rights to ask my questions and talk. So I apologize, Dr. B, if you said that I was threatening you guys. But I'm just saying, if you're going to do something, you should be accountable for it, right? I'm accountable for everything. I get messages from people all, every night. I'm in a grocery store, people are asking me questions, and I can't answer them. I should be able to. So if I'm sitting on a board and they're making decisions like this, then I need to speak up because it is going to affect the taxpayers. It is. Because it is going to affect the taxpayers. It is. It's going to affect me. I'm a taxpayer in New Haven. I am a taxpayer. It will affect me since I'll just talk about me, but that's all I got to say. I just wanted to be clear on this. I'm looking at the contract right now from last year. It was twenty twenty-two. So maybe Mr. Um, Wilcox can, you know, if he wants to change his statement that is a three year, that we're on year four now. For twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, the money was already negotiated. So there really wasn't, it was on the paper. So I'm just saying, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Mr. Wilcox?
Just as a point of clarification, this was originally done as a one-year contract with three optional renewals. So there was a one-year contract and then there were three renewals, which is why three plus one equals four. So I'm the, that is a point that is. Kind of esoteric with finance and operations, the way some of these multi-year contracts work, but that player, I'm hoping that clarifies why it's listed as a three-year renewal. Because it is exercising the third renewal that was part of the original contract. Uh, I'm still going to be voting in support of this. While I might have wished that the district was able to get this out, to put out for bid earlier. The district was also working with getting part-time custodial out the door along with a lot of other things. People think that we're swimming in staff, but we're not. And so there's limits to what staff can do, but I am confident in the plans that they're going to move forward. I believe in the memo, it says before the end of September. Or at beginning of October, if I remember correctly, this will be going out to bid, so there will be plenty of time. To be able to fix any of these issues that people are seeing. Plenty of time for public comment and input on this and plenty of time for the district to figure out which position should come back in-house. So that we do not have to utilize an external vendor. The district has tried using external vendors for a lot of these things. In some ways they're cost effective. And in some ways we're seeing the challenges of that and it's might be better to have district people. And that is something that Mr. Carter, when he was with us, was working on, but his recommendation and the district's recommendation. Was to do this one more time with ABM while we have time to figure some of those things out. Thank you.
Dr. Joyner, did you want to say something or no?
Actually, Mr. Uh, Wilcox thoroughly explained it. This was, this was the third opportunity to renew. And it was based on the foundation of a one-year contract. The fact that we had three opportunities renewed. Meant that we were concerned so that at any given time, when we felt that they didn't meet our standards, we could ha- have fired them. Uh, but it also takes a, a lot of time to find new people that can do a better job. And we are trying to get more jobs back into our unions.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Ms. Downer?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the clarification, but I still stand. These people did a crappy job. The life cycle are of our schools have just decreased, um, the schools that was in. I'm not even talking about other schools, but I know about the school system that I am used to, New Haven Public School System. I'm not even there and I can imagine the heat that's coming off that building and inside. I can imagine it. These same people. Is on the table today and I just want to make it very clear that this is a terrible decision. So you could do what you want. I know how I'm voting today. I'm voting for New Haven today. So do what you want and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Mr. Wilcox?
This will be my final comment on this. I do just want to add that part of the challenges that any vendor that works with us has. Is that they're working with the available resources that this district has for building maintenance. And for capital improvement of the buildings. We had a former CFO who testified to us one point several years ago. That at a previous district, he spent, or previous city, he spent on ten or twelve buildings. On maintenance where we are able to afford to spend on forty-five. So when you spread that across, when you have two plumbers for an entire district, there are challenges for anybody. And when we have contractual obligations, which I fully support, to increase salaries. Annually through the contracts that we also are cutting maintenance. Which is why we're all sitting, or some of us are sitting in a building where it's. I don't know, eighty-five, ninety degrees in here, but that's something that other staff have to deal with, so that's what we're doing, but. Just want to remind everybody that the challenges that some of these vendors have is the available resources that we have to give them. So in some cases, it might be mismanagement and in some cases it's lack of resources, probably a bit of both. But I have confidence the district will be working on this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Joyner?
Uh, to my fellow board members, this is what happens when you try to simplify complexity. And you try to act as if the cause of the moment is behind all of this. The reason we're facing th- these issues is because the state of Connecticut has never funded infrastructure development for our schools. They'll build them. But they don't recognize that they have to be maintained and adjust our budgets. They also don't take into account inflation. I'm sure that everybody at this table, when you go to the grocery store, you know, the stuff costs a lot more now than it did last year. And the way things are going on in the Middle East, gas is going to probably go up. And so you can't just look at one factor. You have to look at a very complex. And historically driven system where the federal government has never supported education, but yet they want to call the shots. And the states will say that education is a creature of the state, but yet they will not fund. It adequately, which means that the real victims are the citizens in this city. Who are in that forty-five percent of people that are taxable, have to bear the brunt. Of the medical facilities we have here, the education facilities we have here, the religious institutions we have here. Because we only can tax forty-five percent of our properties, everybody in this room is affected by that. And so that is a complex problem and it does not require a simple solution. Complex problems require complex analysis, identifying what the driving forces are. Eliminating those negative forces and increasing the positive forces. And so you really shouldn't listen to me or anybody when we give you a simple answer to a complex problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Ms. Downer?
I have a question for the school district. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
All right, um, I want to know, since we are actually, um, voting on this contract for ABM. Why haven't the school contract, um, removed the money for the new position that's going to be the facilities director out of this contract? Why haven't they adjusted that budget?
The proposal that we are making is a proposal for a position to be part of NHPS. Knowing that there are so many issues related to facilities. And that we have spoken about the need for greater oversight. So that would be a position. That does not, it does not belong in the, in their contract. That is a position that we are owning and creating as part of the need of the district.
What is the title of that position?
Director of Facilities.
Director of Facilities. They wouldn't be part of ABM, oversight in ABM?
The position that we have been speaking about for months spoke about creating a position for us, NHPS. To serve as the bridge that's going to bring us the greater oversight that we need. A person that again represents us and to your point made months earlier. That it's not a contractor, but it's one NHPS member.
So what is the salary of that one NHPS, um, member, the new one, the director of facilities?
I do not have that at hand, but that has been posted for quite a while.
Okay, so, so they wouldn't have any, so what you're saying is that this position is needed, but they wouldn't have any interaction with ABM? Who was our facilities contractor?
The position would interact with ABM and any other contractor. Because this will be the person that's going to be on the ground. Supporting the management and the oversight, basically our liaison. With all the contractors that we have, not just ABM. We have many contractors that interact as it relates to facility. This will be the internal person that fills that hole for us. The position was created, it is civil service. It went through the city, following all the protocols, interviews happen, tests happen. We are waiting now on, uh, making an offer to bring the person on board.
So this position would be under the COO?
This position will report to the COO.
So doesn't ABM report to our C O, COO?
ABM, like any other contractor engages with the district many times because of the work that they do. We have them engaged with the COO.
Okay, so this position will not oversee.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
So why is it, no, no, no.
Yes, Dr. Joyner.
We, we're really off our agenda item.
No, we're not.
The, the purpose.
Talking about the COO.
Ms. Downer, one moment please.
But go ahead, go ahead. Keep trying to silence the, um, the person that the public voted for.
That's another point of order, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Dr. Joyner?
Our job at this particular point. Our job at this particular point of deliberation is to vote based on our insight and understanding.
Point of order.
Uh, this contract.
One moment, Ms. Downer.
And not to have.
Point of order.
Nuanced discussions about what salary.
Point of order. Point of order, point of order.
Ms. Downer, one moment please. We're still on a point of order. Thank you.
Basically, we have one thing before us. Do we as board members believe there's sufficient evidence to vote up or down on this issue? And getting into elaborated discussions about a person's salary, not knowing that the person is hot.
Point of order.
Ms. Downer?
Public information, salaries.
Now, now, now finish, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Okay, um, and so we did, we, we, we really need to get back on the question and vote up or down. And if I vote for something, I have enough evidence to decide whether or not it's the best option.
Point of order, well taken. Ms. Downer, do you have another point of order?
Point of order, public, anyone that worked for New Haven, their salary is public. So whatever that was, Dr. Joyner, sorry, point of order.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. We're going to vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, my name is Abby Benitez and I vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Downer?
No.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
All right, thank you. Uh, the next two items are related. Um, these are resolutions involving the. School board and the district giving back to the city. Two buildings, one is West Rock Stream Academy, the other is Quinnipiac Real World Math STEM School. I'll be moving these two items separately just to make sure we're doing what we need to do. Because they're also attached to legalities and building titles and all sorts of things, so. Uh, if there are questions from the board, we do have a representative from the Corporation Council's office, our former COO Attorney Pinto. Who is here, I'm sure he'd be able to answer any questions, but we're going to go ahead and the first is, I move. What's listed as resolution ten point four, and that is that we approve the order of the New Haven Board of Education declaring property compromising West Rock Stream Academy. At three eleven Valley Street, New Haven, Connecticut, to be surplus to school needs and transferring of jurisdiction of such property to the city of New Haven.
Second.
Thank you, that's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Just for this and for the next one, I, you know, once we, the board surpluses a building and it's no longer being used for educational use. It goes back to the city and it's completely up to the city as to what happens with it. I hope whatever process moves forward with to decide what happens to these two buildings, if there is a sale of these buildings. I hope that our city legislators will consider. Um, adding to capital funds in order to update and fix some of our other existing buildings. Maybe starting with the HVAC system at John C. Daniels, but, um, but that's just a request and I trust that they will do what's best for the city.
Seeing no further discussion, we will vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer? Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
Next, I move that we, uh, this is resolution ten point five. I'm sorry, what? Okay, I move a resolution ten point five, I'm, meaning that we approve the, uh, order of the New Haven Board of Education. Declaring the property compromising Quinnipiac Real World Math STEM School at four sixty Lexington Avenue, AKA eight oh five Quinnipiac Avenue. New Haven, Connecticut, to be surplus to school needs and transferring of jurisdiction of such property to the city of New Haven.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer is away. Mr. Juarez? Mr. Juarez?
Yes, I vote.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that motion carries.
Yeah.
Mr. Wilcox?
And finally, I move that we approve the six abstracts, the remaining sixteen agreements, the one amendment. The two purchase orders, nine contracts and remaining three resolutions as listed on our agenda.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that motion carries. Teaching and learning report, Dr. Joyner?
The, the crux of my report for tonight was to have Crystal Emery. Talk to you about her experiences as a New Haven Public School System. And to show actually other students who are dealing with difficulty, how. Whatever you might think, we have resources that you can take advantage of. Most of the kids that I taught at Hill House were from Brookside and Rockview. And then it changed Oriental Garden, same location. Some of you are probably sitting in the audience. And many of those kids went to some of the finest schools. And many of them are also, uh, holding high positions in New Haven. Their alders, their teachers. And, uh, that was a vibrant community back in the seventies when I, when I came here. And everything that you said about Catherine Brennan, uh, before Clarence Rogers is true. Everything that she said about Sher- Sheridan was true. Wha- what we're dealing with now is. It, it is not as easy to educate kids now as it was when I was a young teacher. And you don't have to be a genius to know why. I mean, words that our children hear when they're simply walking down the street. The messages we send to them through songs, the things that they're able to see on television. And, and Crystal's book is all about that. But it, it, it speaks to a time when despite the fact that even then you had a lot of single parent families. You had a community that helped those families. And you had grandmothers that were grandmother ages. And, and of course, that was helpful. So the bottom line about teaching and, and learning is that teachers can do all they can to teach. But it's up to families and, and our students to do all they can to learn. And to not to be defiant, not to disturb, uh, the school or the class. And, and of course, we were united back then in terms of what we expected our students to do. And and of course, we were united back then in terms of what we expected our students to do when they got to school. And if someone, if I went to Ms. Bessie Jenkins and told her that something that one of her kids was doing, she'd be on that case. And um so I think it's important for us to understand that what happens to students in terms of achievement rests on the foundation of the parent as first teacher, and then the teachers that they encounter in school, and the resources that we're able to provide. And I'm gonna do a shout out real quick for Honda Smith, because what Honda does in her program is she takes kids that would normally be problems and convinces them that they should not be problems in school, that they should learn as much as they possibly can. And she has the presence to demand respect. And so we don't, thank you. We we don't get anything done by fighting each other. Because that's exactly what the forces that are arrayed against us want. They don't have to do anything but sit back and watch us call each other names. A support target when the whole, whole, our whole group is boycotted. And you get a preacher that says, I want some of that money, so I'm gonna support it. That solidarity around good issues, and trying to figure out what the truth is before you jump to conclusions, that's how we got this far. Everybody say we come this far by faith, it was a lot more than faith. It was action and righteous action. So as far as teaching and learning is concerned, I'll be coming to you as 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 time goes on to talk about how we can improve the conduct and behavior of our students in schools so they could benefit from what we have to offer. We have far more despite our poverty. I couldn't use my public library in North Carolina. I couldn't swim in the pool. I had to swim in the creek. But that didn't keep me from reading and learning everything I could, and it didn't keep Crystal from becoming an internationally renowned writer and producer. And I'm hoping they'll make the book into a movie. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any questions, comments? Our students are not here for their report. Superintendent's report, Dr. Negron?
Thank you. Um today for my report, I do want to provide the latest um recommendation on our budget mitigation plan. Uh but before I do so, I do want to tell you that I do plan to bring you our year in review in the month of July. Um there is amazing work happening in our district. We see it every day across all of our schools because of the dedication of our staff or administrators or executive leadership or central office. And there are highlights and areas to be celebrated contrary to the narrative around everything is broken. So I do want to share that I will bring you those highlights in the month of July. Um but again, to walk you through where we have been as it regards to the budget. Um this year, we have faced unprecedented challenges in crafting our budget, most notably due to the revenue constraints following the conclusion of the American Rescue Plan and elementary and secondary school emergency relief, the ARPESFunds. As we navigated these difficulties, we were confronted with a projected deficit of twenty-three point two million, which you've heard me reference for weeks. Dr. White, can we go to the next slide, please? So you heard me reference the twenty-three point two million. Uh we know that this is an alarming figure. We know it, we feel it, you feel it, I feel it, that poses a significant threat to our school community and the future of our children, putting at jeopardy the high quality education that all of our students deserve, one that adequately prepares them to pursue their dreams. In this slide, as soon as we're able to get it back up, I want to bring you back to the original slide that I gave you in terms of my best estimate to mitigate the budget. Which you may recall, once we get it up there, that I shared it with you back in April. And I said, this is some of the thinking that we have on how best we could mitigate the twenty-three point two million dollar budget deficit. So Dr. White, bring me to slide three, please. That was the scenario that I painted for you, and I want to refresh everyone's memory. I said we were banking on hopefully getting the support of the mayor's proposed budget, and we were hoping that the alders would vote for that budget, and that that budget would give us the five million. And I want to say thank you to Mayor Ellicker, I want to say thank you to the city, that came into fruition. I, we also knew that the governor was speaking about a budget that would have a proposed Connecticut excess cost grant, and we were banking on that one point seven. That's what we knew back in April. I shared that with you. I said, okay, then I'm gonna try to see where do I cut? Because I don't want, I want to limit, balance out impact on kids and balance out layoffs. Best case scenario, this is what I gave you. And I started talking about I might have to lay off librarians, I might have to cut middle school sports, I might have to lay off arts. Things that I know our kids need and deserve. My job is to mitigate the budget. Like the speaker said, I knew what I was getting into. Yes, I knew what I was getting into. When you announced my superintendency, I was asked, the independent asked me, what are you most, what do you think will be the biggest challenge? I said, I know it already, it's going to be the budget. Because our pastor is going away. I knew what I was getting into. I knew I would be facing a budget deficit. This was the best plan that I could give you, knowing and we heard layoffs. People work in this community. When we lay off people, the economy suffers, because these are our own people. So we went back to the drawing board, back to, I listened all the comments in the independent. Listen to all of the ideas. We have not been sitting pretty, contrary to the to the public speaker. That we've been sitting here looking pretty, not acting. I wish the person that came today, where has he been? First time I see this gentleman. And now I'm taking offense, because I know we've been working hard. My teachers that you see there, they've been working hard. The union has been working hard. All of us trying to put a path forward that will do the best with what we got. So I take offense with that gentleman that I just met. We haven't been sitting pretty. We've been trying to problem solve. Next slide. I can give you my best mitigation, because my job is to give you a mitigation. That is my job. So I still stand, and now it's a reality. It's no more a proposal, it's a reality. Again, thank you to all the state legislators that work hard to get into LaMonte's ear. Thank you for that, because not only do we have the support of our mayor, the support of our alders, the support of the city, we now can say that deficit because of the revenue, we're no longer talking about twenty-three point two million dollars. We are now talking about a fourteen point six million dollar deficit. Because we have the five million dollars from the city, we have the one point seven that is coming for excess cost grant. And we also have a new grant that we are going to get that will bring one point nine million dollars for special education. Revenue. Now we're gonna use it for what it's meant. We are now speaking about a fourteen point six million dollar gap. What do we do? I still feel confident in the way that I felt confident when I spoke to you in April, that we can get and we have identified, contrary to the other narrative, that we're wasting tax dollar money. We're not wasting tax dollar money. We keep an eye on every dollar that goes out in contracts. We're not just saying, go ahead, keep raising the contracts. Sure, we're gonna waste taxpayer dollars, that's not what we're doing. We do this work with integrity. And my CFO that is about to graduate, to to retire, with fifty-four years of investment, led our district and our finances with integrity. We are not hiding anything. So that speaks to her character and my team's character, so I also take offense to that. And I'm here to tell you, we are an open book. With this new plan, pretty soon you're gonna see the open book. You will see the school pages that had to be done by hand, because I can't get a contract to get a partner to do it for me on a switch, because I'm looking to save money. I could have easily gotten the contract. Click the button, it's done. Looking to save your dollars. I'm gonna cut one point five in contracts. I already told the team, we're gonna cut one point two in the security and the custodial overtime. Whenever people say we're gonna do things after school, we're gonna look at that very carefully. What are we doing? Who is doing it? Who's the partner? Can they at least pay us for the custodian and the security? Because we have a lot of great partnerships, but nothing is for free. We have to pay the cost. I'm reducing that budget line. I'm gonna reduce the budget line, there's a lot of part-time work. Or teachers who do great work after school, often we have to pay them part-time. People that come in to do part-time work, all of that's gonna be scrutinized. I'm gonna cut four hundred thousand dollars in that line. I also want to talk about travel and mileage. There was a lot of talk about travel and mileage. I'm going to cut that line by two hundred K, but I also want to clarify and make sure that we have the correct narrative. That line doesn't mean that we're all traveling and collecting mileage. That line, let me go back to my numbers, because my people know I love to speak with facts and speak with numbers, staying true to my transparency. And please know that that particular budget line that speaks about travel and mileage also includes the amount that we pay for our athletic transportation. It is baked into that line that everybody wanted to say we're wasting money traveling everywhere. Where guess what, our athletes need two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to be able to travel to all of their games. That is, that is part of that line. You also need to know that that line includes the money that we pay for all the parking to the New Haven Authority, because we have to, we have to pay when we park, because we have no place to park. That's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars also in that line. So now I hope that brings clarity on what does it mean when you read travel and mileage. My new CFO knows, first duty, when we develop our budget, we're gonna break it apart so you can see all of the details inside of these lines. But in the meantime, I wanted to give you that insight. Now that brings me, I'm confident that I can mitigate that much, and I'm now at eleven point three. So down from the twenty-three point two, while I was sitting pretty like that person said, mitigated down to eleven point three. What do we do next? We did look at librarians, and we know that every school needs a librarian. And I said to my team, how can we do it to still make sure that every school has a librarian? Because we cannot lose that service. We looked at it, everything, schedules, plans, everything. My original plan, we were gonna cut all of them. Guess what, we can't. We can't. But we were able to reduce that by three. It means every school will still have library media center services. There'll be some sharing like we have now at the elementary level. The high schools will keep their librarian, but we will have them, and we were still able to cut three. I cut the one assignment that was the central office. Lots of cuts, central office, take more. That position, we cut it, we put that back into the schools. So we cut three. We looked at every arts teacher. The original plan was to see, could I reduce that by a quarter? We looked at every schedule, every elementary schedule. Looked at high schools. And the thing was, keep programming for kids. Keep programming for kids. Can we do it with less? Can we make some cuts and make some savings? Guess what? We couldn't. I couldn't cut not even one. We need them to be able to run the schedules. Without them, we could not run the schedules. And second, we have contract agreements. Without them, it would have resulted in some serious issues and violations to contracts. So no cuts to the arts. So what did I do then? All this resizing that people, I get it, you hate when I use that term. I stopped using the term. This is how I'm laying it out for you, look at that third column. That is resizing. That is what you do when you are in a crisis and you are still holding some things that are true to you, and you're trying to do more with less. That is resizing. And unfortunately, I agree with the speakers. Black and brown communities, often we find ourselves there, because the root problem is that we're not adequately resourced. We have to continue to deal with cuts and do more with less. So that is the plan. I want to unpack the plan so that everybody understands. We looked at every vacancy that existed in the district. And I hope you recall reports that we've done that speaks about the many positions that we need in this district. When we speak about caseloads, and there are a lot of more positions that we need. A lot of more millions of dollars that need to be invested, that we should be adding, not cutting. But that's the reality. I still haven't found somebody that said, Dr. Negron, I feel your pain, here's twenty-three point two million dollars. Don't make cuts. My job is to give you a mitigated budget. Looked at every position, every vacancy, and said, can we do without? It's harder, but can we still do it? Even though it's more pain, meaning, and I want to share some of the pain. It means that we had to consolidate. When you cut positions, that mean that position is not more going to be in that school. The team is going to have to do with less. We cut one point eight million dollars worth. That was twenty-two FTEs. And so that you know what that stands for. You have teaching positions and you have um principal pos- Sorry, teaching positions and a para educator. So twenty-one teacher positions were cut, but there were vacant. And one para educator was cut, but that was vacant. I hope you're with me, so far, no layoffs. Then, I looked at central office staff. What can we do? What can we do with less? What can we deploy? We ended up reducing nine FTEs. Seven of those were vacancies, two were active. We're also sharing the pain. I also did look at classes. We looked at all K.A. schedules and that took weeks while we were sitting pretty. Um every high school schedule. Looked at every department. Look at high school graduation criteria. Because we have to make sure that we have programming so that our kids eventually can graduate. And B, have something under their belt. And B, have something under their belt. We combine classes. We close some classrooms. Stay within contract language. So even though class size goes up, we're not violating contract language. So it's all going to be within contracts size. That got me one point seven million dollars. Twenty-five FTEs. And then I said, hey, we are a district that we run with vacancies all the time. I said, what vacancies can I project? Most likely, they're gonna be sitting there for about a year. And I'm gonna go on the low end. Because of course, any vacancy, I wanna post, I wanna hire. I want certified people in front of our kids because our kids deserve the best. And I'm going to use a vacancy assumption of one million. Board, that is hard work that my team and I have done for weeks. That gets me to six million dollars. I said, and everybody has heard, I do not wanna close schools. I understand the pain that comes from cutting schools. And I went to you and I apologize for delivering that message on the last day. I've been working to avoid it. I am stuck on six million dollars. And that is why I had no choice than to say, just like we have done a merger, we have surplus two schools back. So we can save on electricity. I had no other choice than to say, I need to put the closure there. And yes, best case scenario, I would have proposed that closure to your comment the year after. Because closures require time. Like we did with the merger. Conversations, dialogue, closure, because you are ripping apart a community. I agree with you. But I have no other choice, cuz I am a six million dollar gap. Closing that school and knowing that we are ripping apart a community and the impact that it has on children. I can tell you, and you quoted correctly. Cuz I said to my choice and enrollment, how many people are registered? I want data. Real data. Not hypotheticals, how many? I have a hundred and thirty-two kids registered for that school next year. And I wanna correct a public comment. Months ago, we already delivered the news that we were going to cut pre-K three, four. And we did that and you need to know, because we only had six families. Six, not thirty-four, like somebody quoted. So I wanna correct the record, there were never thirty-four families waiting for pre-K. There were six families. All families were spoken to. All families have placement. That's how that closure came about. I have one thirty-two. Not ideal. Twenty-seven FTEs. Based on the number of vacancies, nobody would be laid off if you decide. Because it's a hard decision to make. Not my decision, my job is to recommend how I can mitigate a budget. All, all staff would have jobs due to the retirements, resignations and the number of vacancies that we have in the books right now. If that were to happen, like I shared with the staff, because I said to you, I believe in you and I am transparent. And hopefully, in the two years that you've known me, that's how you know me. Contrary to what you hear. And I said to you before you read this as a headline, I am coming to you. I am not hiding behind anybody. I am coming to you to say I have no other options. And I explained this to you. And I feel your pain. And I said, I've also working with choice and enrollment, what do we do with the families? And what we would do would be that we would run a special lottery for these families. Not new families, but these one thirty-two families that were registered to be a Brennan. And that the team will run a special lottery that says, these are places where we have spots. There would be a preference to keep siblings together. And that there would be support in how to navigate that lottery where they could do it online. If you decide, when you decide, the staff would be deployed to be a Brennan. To, to work with families. Cuz at the very least, we have to do something for families. But again, to the public and Maya, I know you're writing. And thank you for helping me to deliver the message. That is where we are. We are at this situation right now where it's not new news. It's not new news. I am reminded when I reflected about a former superintendent that got before you and told you, you are eventually going to look at a thirty million dollar deficit. And she was right. Twenty-three point two. I heard everybody wanted to kill her when she said it. But she named it. This has been coming. We were saved by Art Esser. Art Esser is gone. So, Board, please know, I feel like we've done our due diligence. You have a hard decision to make. My team would have to continue to figure out how we mitigate that three point eight. But please know, we have looked at every position. There's nothing else. And before I close my update, I want to thank my entire team at Central Office. I wanna thank you for the many hours that I've pulled you into multiple meetings on the spot. Bring me the data, I fire down all kinds of questions. And you have to frantically deliver for me and show me. Show me evidence. I thank you for all the work, the hard work that you've done. Board, with that, I conclude my update.
Thank you, Dr. Negron. Mr. Wilcox, Mayor Elicker, Dr. Joyner.
Yes, thank you for that, Dr. Negron. I do think this is an item that we're not able to vote on this evening and we're gonna need to schedule a special meeting close to around July first. So that there's time for last ditch efforts to mitigate that final six million dollars or so. And potentially avoid an abrupt school closure. The superintendent had told us that that's what would be on the table if things, if the funding from the state didn't happen. I think we also need to take a look at that because in addition to the school closure, there's three point eight million. And it looks like the only way to make that up would be through layoffs. And there is no space to be able to do that. Those cuts would be devastating into the schools. If it was something that could have been figured out, I think we would have heard about it tonight. So this is, I just wanna say one or two little things here. One is that none of those cuts that were listed up there makes sense. I'm not in support of any of those cuts per se, but a Board of Education under state statutes, I think ten dash two twenty, we are only allowed by law to spend the money that the city allocates to us. And that would include monies that come in from the federal government and the state government. So we have to have a balanced budget. Last year, we had a budget which was not balanced. And we've had a habit of passing budgets that were not balanced, but we've had mitigation plans. And for several years, we were coming in, mitigation plans worked. We're still chasing a three to four million dollar deficit in this current fiscal year now that staff are still working to try to figure out if we can mitigate that. We're gonna need to have something that's in balance because that's a responsibility under state law. The state had the opportunity, our legislature and the governor had an opportunity with S P, I think it was one one five one, an act concerning disconnected youth, which would have adjusted the formula, the state's funding formula to make schools more equitably funded. They didn't, they weren't able to get that done this session. We'll have to try again in future sessions. That would have brought tens, tens of millions of more dollars into school districts that need it. Because when you look at the per pupil funding, we're underfunded. If we had the funding that Hamden had per pupil, we would have more than fifty million dollars. We would be talking about expanding programs, not cutting programs. If we even had the state average. If we even had what Hartford has, we'd be looking at about another ten or twelve million dollars, which would wipe out a lot of those devastating cuts that were listed there. But our state legislators worked on that, it wasn't able to happen this session. They were able to bring in more money into the city. So I am hoping that the city can take a look and maybe allocate some more funds into schools. Maybe be creative. I will just say, as Chair of the Finance Committee for more than five years now, if there is information that we can provide, if there's something that could be done, if people need to meet, I'm happy to help facilitate that. But thank you much for this presentation and the dire news that was inside.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox, Mayor Elicker.
Thank you. And I appreciate Dr. Negron's layout of the situation and it's clear that you feel quite passionate about the situation. I, I just wanna say a couple of things. First of all, I'm sorry to the Brennan Rogers community. I'm sorry to the whole New Haven Public Schools community because it's a very, very difficult time. And, you know, I see it in my daughter's schools and I think we see it across all districts. Every day, we hear about some struggle with not enough staffing in schools, the school buildings not being kept up to a standard that we would like. And second, I'd say, you know, there was some things said and I just wanna make clear, we're all trying to, we're really trying to do the right thing. With the exception of Dr. Negron and me, everyone else on the board are volunteers. They don't get paid a dollar to be up here. And they're following their hearts. Every board member is following their hearts, trying to do the right thing and, and really care about the district. There was, you know, comments made alluding that we may be trying to hide something, that the district's a failure, that everything's broken. This is in the works for a long time and just, we really are trying to do the right thing here. I appreciate what Dr. Joyner said earlier that we're not each other's enemies. And, you know, New Haven is a brown and black community. And the real challenge here is that our, our state has one of the worst inequity in education in the nation. We rank, rank close to last in the nation as far as education inequity. And so we, we need to continue to work together to push our state to do more. And we, we killed ourselves this legislative, legislative session to push the state to do more. Many of you helped us with that. Dr. Negron and I were up at the Capitol regularly. I met with the governor and other mayors multiple times. We, I led the charge to have fifty-two mayors sign an op ed to the governor to say we need more education funding. We had students, teachers, staff up at the, the state pushing, pushing, pushing. Our legislators did what they could, but unfortunately, there was just an unwillingness by our governor despite a massive amount of money that the state is sitting on to increase our, our school funds. And New Haven has increased our funds to New Haven Public Schools in the last five years by over fifty percent. I've raised taxes effectively almost every year, in part to pay for these increases. But there's only so much, as folks know that own a home in New Haven, that we can do in New Haven as well. Dr. Negron is doing everything she possibly can to avoid layoffs. And I think that's kind of guide number one here is we, our kids desperately need more staff in our schools, not fewer staff. And as everyone knows, when there's vacancies and we lose those vacancies, those are not a person that we know. But that is a position that won't be filled. And all too often, we hear, we continue, you all continue to be asked to do more. And that's not fair to you. And we hear that. We just don't have other options at the moment. Just specifically to the three point eight million dollar gap. I, I wanna say that, you know, the Alders were very gracious in increasing the education funding by five million dollars this year. I'm exploring whether there's a pathway to do more. And, you know, we're trying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Elicker. Dr. Joyner and then Dr. Benitez, Dr. Joyner?
First of all, let me thank the parents from Catherine Brennan for staying for the meeting. All the time advocacy groups come in here and they leave as soon as they make their speeches. And if you're gonna stay here with a baby, as hot as it is, then that tells me a lot about your conviction and your concern for the welfare of, of our community. I think one of the things, and I'm gonna use some words now deliberately because I think it conveys how I feel about how our city is treated, is treated. New Haven is being pimped. And the reason New Haven is being pimped is because unlike some cities that have a hundred percent of their property taxable, we only have forty-five percent of ours taxable. We have some of the best hospitals, some of the best institutions. And people from all over the state and the world come to these institutions. And, and the tax burden of supporting those institutions is not on them. So you can roll in here from East Cupcake, Connecticut and be treated at Smilo for cancer or be treated at, at the hospital for heart issues and so on and so forth and roll back out. But in the meantime, the support of those institutions is on the backs of New Haven citizens. That's the truth. That's the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And clearly, in a pimp relationship, the pimp is the person that has the greatest benefit. So we're really being taken advantage of because we allow ourselves to be taken advantage of. And we don't ask people when they ask for our votes, how is it that you're gonna allow the governor to be sitting on a billion dollar surplus and call it a rainy day fund when there's a blizzard and a tsunami in New Haven? And none of that rainy day money comes our way. And throughout history, people have used divide and conquer to keep working class people, certain immigrant groups, Native Americans, and the only people in this country that had been enslaved, well, Irish, Irish Americans were indentured servants. But African Americans. And to keep us fighting among, among ourselves. And the only time that we get justice is when we realize what's being done to us. And we realize where the problem is coming from. And we don't let people come in and take advantage of, of our, of our pain by sitting up and making a speech where, where that person is gonna attack certain people in the room. That's, that's another game that's been played on us forever. And we all see it for what it is. We're gonna do the very best we can to make sure that any child that's in a scooter has been shut, has, has been closed gets an opportunity to continue their education. You're a lot younger than I am, but at one, at one point, we had Roger Sherman. We gave that school to a rabbi for a dollar. We had hired, it was out in North Haven, I, I don't know how that works. And we have to really be alert to those kinds of things and learn how to trust each other and trust each other based on action, not because I say you should trust me. Call me out when I need to be called out. And I know Charlene was gonna do that anyway because she's been doing that since she was born. So, and I appreciate it because once it happens and once we have a meeting of the minds, no hard feelings. And let's get back to the drawing board. Because for as long as you remain who you are, you're gonna have this issue. And we have to recognize that and try to see as much clear evidence as we can so that we can make the right decision. You were right to come here and advocate for your school. Absolutely. But, but we need a point now where we need to advocate for our city. And as God is my witness, any parent that calls me about a kid that's being put in another school and they're not happy with what's going on, I will relay that information to the superintendent so that we can make that work. And we can't entertain questions from the group because it's a meeting, but I can talk to you after the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Dr. Benitez?
Yes, I'm a little bit concerned because at this moment, I am a little bit lost. If we don't do what the superintendent is suggesting we do, then while Mr. Wilcox is suggesting is that then while Mr. Wilcox is suggesting is that we actually lay off people in order to find those three point eight million, I I am confused about that. And that's one. And two, um. I do want the public to know that all of us are taxpayers. That we don't get paid to do that, that we do this because we love this city. And I wish I had a benefactor that would give me the money so so we don't have to do any of those things. But the truth is that we have to have kids in schools that have the resources. And having schools that are open with small numbers of kids, it's not efficient. It's not financially efficient. They don't have enough resources. I can think of one or two more schools that are not necessarily in the brown neighborhoods that we will have to consider in the future. So I want the public to understand that this is not personal stuff. This is things that we have to do in order to ensure that kids have the resources, in order to ensure that teachers have jobs. And again, I still have my question for Mr. Wilcox. If we don't approve this, then what does that mean? Do we lay off teachers? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I'm happy to clarify. I'm just pointing out the implication of what was on the slide that the superintendent showed us. That with a close to six million dollars left to mitigate, part of the plan would be closure of Brennan, which would result in two point two million savings. And then there would be, I think it was three point eight that she still does not have a plan for, despite months of her and her staff's effort. The implications of that being, in the end, when most of our district monies go towards staff, transportation and special education, special education, there's issues with cutting that. People have legal rights to that. Monies are attached to that. Transportation, the unfortunate part of school choice is we bus kids all over town to dismantle that. Will not be able to be done in a week. To dismantle that will take a year or two. And there's millions, tens of millions of dollars in magnet funding attached to some of that. So that's left with staff. And so that's the unfortunate thing, which is why I'm glad we're not voting on this this evening. Because we need to find time, create the last week that we can for last-dish efforts, ideas, working with the city, buying lottery tickets, I don't know, uh, to try to find the last monies. Or we will be in that situation, I fear.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox and Dr. Benitez. Just wanna thank you, the staff in the districts, for doing the horrible work of trying to mitigate this budget. And also wanna express my appreciation for everyone advocating for what they know is necessary and needed. Does this conclude your superintendent's report?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Um, for my report, uh, I will be uh proposing a date to the board for our orientation and retreat and asking for feedback on that date. Next on the agenda is the facility, facilities naming committee report. Dr. Joyner?
Well, we've, we've approved naming the floor at Florida Little after Sal Vertaram and Bob Lamell. And um, we approved uh earlier naming the adult ed center after Reverend Edwin Edmonds. And so the action's in motion now to get the signage and also to plan the naming ceremonies. So we'll be getting back to you on that.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, uh, Head Start report and citywide school building committee report. Mr. Wilcox?
So on those, they'll be very brief. Head Start, the meeting was canceled due to some scheduling issues. It'll likely be scheduled. If it's not, our next meeting is on the third, Thursday of July. The citywide school building report, we heard the stewardship report, which should be posted. And we also considered the building transfers that we voted on this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for July tenth. And if you'd like me to move on to finance and operations, I'll just say that we said farewell to Ms. Hannan's, our long-serving school employee and CFO, and we had a welcome to our new CFO, Mr. Men Hernandez. We also saw the May financial report. As I mentioned, we're still chasing a three-plus million dollar or so deficit, and we'll find out if that's able to close as final numbers come in for this fiscal year. And then just also wanted to share, we heard about upcoming financial issues around charter schools and special education. As people might not understand, when we have charter schools, we have to provide special education for those students. That's our responsibility. And it's a fight every year to try to have equal so that a New Haven public school kid is having the same level of services as a charter school kid. Charter schools can suck resources out of the public schools. And that's a lot of work on staff to try to negotiate that down and create some um ways of working with that. So we were just getting the heads up that those issues are gonna continue, and they're gonna be trying to mitigate that by hiring special education workers, staff, teachers, to go work in those charter schools to serve those kids' needs instead of expensive outplacements or giving them more money to the charters than we're able to spend per person on our own students. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. Governance report, Dr. Benitez?
Yes, um, our next uh meeting will be on the twenty-sixth of fourth thirty, June twenty-sixth. And we will be discussing guidance documents for the expulsion and expulsion policy.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Thank you, Dr. Benitez, for the food service task group. Um, that group met this month. Uh, the food service team is preparing for summer meals. And the school break group, task force, is preparing for uh the break between the end of the summer and the beginning of the school year and other breaks. And as well, the district is working with the nurse department and families to update the documentation as it relates to food allergies. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mayor Elicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.